For the candidates, I have a paper for that and then you have a paper for the ballot. And we have that available. And then any notes you take, we'll send to Chrissy and in and the ballot will also take appearance in that to Chrissy as well. And I'll go over it again at that time when in the meeting. I just want to make sure everybody has paper with them now. And Jason, I'm going to have to have you mute while we do this. Thank you, just to make sure. Okay. Everybody? Chris, you're not muted. I just, I don't know what you're tearing. Sorry. And Jason, you're still not muted.
I'm trying to, where do you, where is that?
It should be down at the bottom. Don't hit the red phone, hit the microphone next to it.
Okay, I see.
You don't hang up before you, there you go, perfect. Good job. Okay. We're all learning together. This is just not fun. I can't wait till we all come back together. So, okay, so we are recording now. So it is six o'clock. So I'm going to call our meeting to order. And just to kind of let everybody know, we'll be discussing later in tonight's meeting about going to a live stream platform. So we can improve transparency. We're not unable to do that for tonight's meeting, but it's being recorded, will be posted within 24 hours. And then at the next meeting, when we're live streaming, we're going to go back and reaffirm all of the action items from the April 14th meeting that was recorded. And then tonight's meeting will reaffirm our action items, just so that there's no question that we're trying to be as transparent as possible and making sure that everybody is comfortable with what we've done. Okay? All right. So if you could all, I have flag behind me, so I'm going to move out of the way and we'll say the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. And then I'll read the mission statement, which I should have already had up. I apologize. I got logged out. Ah, sorry. I hate online meetings. Okay. And I should have this memorized. I'm sorry, Dr. Meyer. I kind of have it memorized. It's not word for word. So our daily mission, Lakeland Joint School District's daily mission is to maximize student learning and ensure every student is growing academically, socially, emotionally, and behaviorally every day in all environments. So that's just kind of reminding us of our why. Um, let's see, patron input. Did we get any patron input, Chrissy?
Um, there's a patron that just joined the meeting.
That's our family for the.
There we go. Perfect.
Okay. Well, patron input was after, I'm sorry, I scrolled ahead. My apologies. Bear with me, sorry. Okay, so staff report. So this is the Coog, oh, I'm going to destroy your name, Craigan family?
Yeah.
Got it.
Okay, sorry. So this is the Craigan family and they have three kids in our school district and they're going to join us. We have Aiden, who is in fifth grade. Aiden, raise your hand. Hi, Aiden. We have Kyler in second grade. Hi, Kyler. And then Bradley is in high school. And what grade are you in, Bradley?
Ninth.
Ninth grade, wonderful. And so the, they're all going to talk to us to see how the remote distance learning is going. We want to hear the good, but we also want to hear what challenges you're having, so we can maybe improve it as we move forward. Okay? Okay, so who wants to go first? Is Dr. Meyer gonna go or the family? Oh, Kyler, is it Kyler?
Yeah.
Okay, Kyler.
What do you like about it?
I like seeing my friends on Zoom, the Zoom meetings, and I like spending time with my family. And I like to.
Are the classes easy to get to?
The classes are easy to get to on electronics.
Oh, very good. Are you able to keep up with all of the work? Okay.
Yeah.
And you're not fighting with your brothers too much, are you?
Yes.
So Aiden, what about you? How's fifth grade going?
Good.
Yeah? What do you like best about it?
Um.
Okay, what do you like least about it?
Uh, not seeing my friends.
Yeah, that's hard, isn't it?
Yeah.
What is your favorite part about it?
Um. Google Classroom. Yeah, Google Classroom is easy to access all of my work.
Okay. And do you feel you have good communication with your teacher? Okay, good. And other board members, at any point, if you want to chime in and ask questions, please unmute and join. I forgot, oh, Bradley, sorry Bradley. High school's a little bit different, isn't it? How's it going for you?
Yeah, I like, it's a bit different because it's easier for me to get to my classes with the Google Classroom and stuff. But what I don't like about it is that with math, it's getting harder to do all the.
Like the learning skills.
Yeah. Yeah, learn new skills and everything we're just doing it, it's hard to do without a teacher there.
Yeah. Are you able to like email your teacher questions or how's that working?
Yeah, I may be able to do that.
Okay, but it's not the same as being right there in person, is it?
Yeah.
Okay. And mom, what about you? Are you, how are you feeling it's going?
It's going really well. The kids seem to be able to access what they need to access and it's pretty straightforward, like with the teachers, they email and are pretty informative.
Okay. And what don't you like about it, other than that they're not in school?
They're not in school. No, our situation's a little bit different than most. So we, one of our kids has some medical issues. So we haven't had any medical issues since he's been out of school. And so we're actually really enjoying the online learning.
Okay.
But they miss their friends. They miss going out and playing and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Chairman, if I could ask just a real quick question from the parents?
Yes.
Um, so from your perspective, from parents, are the, at each grade band that you have, the three grade bands, do you think that the work expected by the teachers is too little, right on, you know, track for what you think the situation is, considering this is the kind of a unique situation in the lifetime that we've been in, or too much? Which one do you think, and you don't have to say the teachers' names, but just for the grade bands, where do you think it's hitting?
Fifth grader have more homework than our high schooler. And I thought it would be the other way around.
Okay, good to hear. I mean, not good to hear, but interesting. Okay.
He seems to be getting more homework as it progresses. It seemed at first, there was like, I think that's still kind of like, what do we do? What do we give them? Because for a while, there was like, you're done. You just did it for like an hour and all of a sudden your homework's done. That was a little weird. But the second grader, they definitely got a calendar every week, so he knows what to do on Monday for the rest of the week. So that's kind of nice. Same thing with the fifth grader, that everything's kind of laid out the whole week.
Can I ask, do you have like specific times that you log in, like especially the high schooler? Do you have specific times you log in for specific classes?
Yeah, he's all, Tuesdays all day. He has meetings with all his classes.
Okay. And then what about the younger grades? How does, how is that working?
They're doing Zoom classes. So twice a week, they do Zoom meetings with their friends and teacher. And those have been, it's nice for them to be able to see their friends, so.
Okay.
And they've been really good at like emailing back and forth. The kids email them or text them and they get back to them right away.
Good. And so the other board members, please chime in. Any questions, comments? I think we're trying to.
Two is, I've been at home too. I'm working from home. So if they, if the boys have questions with stuff, I can help them out. I know that some of the stuff my second grader has, he's got a tablet, an iPad. And so some of the stuff doesn't work on it. So he has to use a laptop to get in. So some of the stuff that she posts, he just can't access or click on to write and type it in. So he kind of goes back and forth between the tablet and a laptop. So fortunately, we have it all here, so it's not a big deal. But most kids.
Yeah.
And then if they just have an iPad, it's not very friendly with an iPad.
Okay. That's good to know. Rob, you had something?
I was just going to comment on the math, the comment that one of the kids made about the math probably being the most difficult subject because of the, the specific, you know, skills that you have to have to teach math, especially I've got twins that are in geometry and trigonometry right now. So I'm having to dig 35 years back about sine, cosine, tangent, and the math is probably taking the most amount of time. But fortunately, you know, I was a math tutor in college. So I mean, I, I excel in math, but I would, I would, you know, second that the math is probably the most challenging because it takes so much repetition. And when the high schoolers are meeting once a week, you have to have the discipline to go in and work on math every single day. Because if you're only hitting it once a week for a couple of hours, the skills that you gain get lost. So I would say that's the challenge with the high school especially, is the once a week meeting, even though the, the skills and the objectives are laid out on Mondays or Tuesdays, whatever it may be. Adhering to that on a daily disciplined basis is probably a pretty big challenge.
Yeah, it's, it's, I can't imagine the kids that maybe their parents are working and they're just doing it all by themselves. Because it's easier for me, because I'm home, I can keep them on task and I can look at it. If they have questions, you know, I, I can do some of it. I mean, he's just in algebra right now. So if it was harder math, I might have some issues. But for now, I can handle most of what it is. And you know, I tell them like, utilize your resources, you know, email your teacher, ask me. You have the book here, the text, there's examples online.
Yeah.
So if, if they have resources to know how to do that, to access what they have at home and using the internet, it can definitely help. And there's YouTube videos all over the place, but.
Yeah.
If the teacher's not giving them that information, then they have to kind of just think about it on their own, which most probably are not. They're like, I'm just going to get done as fast as I can and be done with it. But if there's enough resources there, right in front of their face, then they'll be more likely to look at it, I think.
Yeah, I agree. That was my two cents. Keep up the good work.
Thank you, Rob. Michelle, do you have any questions or comments? No? Ramona?
I did. I was curious with the parents or even the kids themselves, if there's any part of this experience that you would actually enjoyed and might like to continue if and when school opens. Is there anything about it that you're like, oh, this is pretty cool?
No, I want everything to go back to normal, which we'll see how that's about. But they miss their friends. I think that's a big part of, like socialization is huge for our kids. I don't know. They, they miss their friends. They need to go back to school.
I heard it, yes.
We got mom's vote anyways.
I mean, I think having all those resources online helps out. That could, you know, down the road, you know, if some kids that need extra help, and they're not getting enough at school, all those online resources that are, they're doing right now, they could be beneficial for the kids who need extra help for extra stuff at home. So maybe math or English or reading, extra exercises for some of those kiddos. So you know, the ones that are struggling in certain subjects, I think a lot of these resources that we're, we're doing could probably stay the same. And for some of those kids, it could be an easy thing to continue when school's back and going, saying, hey, since we're still doing it, here's some extra stuff we're going to keep on, you know, Google Classroom or some of these areas, so these kids can keep accessing it if they're struggling to get extra help.
I like the idea. Thank you. That was good input. And the kids.
Get sports back. They miss sports.
Yes.
They're all disappointed that they can't play baseball and soccer. So if we could figure something out there, that'd be beneficial.
Oh, there's so many families out there right now struggling with that. And like, I hear you. So the, with, like Ramona asked, we got mom's input on, and dad's on keeping things. What, what do the kids think? Do they want to keep some of this? Anything they'd like to keep from this online activity? No. What about, I, eight, Kyler, what about Kyler? Is there anything that you'd like to see keep going forward with this online learning?
He likes being home.
Okay.
What do you like?
Oh, he wants to do more school. He wants Zoom meetings on weekends.
Well, we could see what we could do. I don't know if you'll get a lot of support with that. Oh my gosh. And what, is it Aiden? Did I say that right?
Yeah.
Yeah. What about you?
Uh, kind of.
Kind of? Yeah.
What do you want to keep?
Um. Uh, Google Classroom, because it is always organized and it has like reading stuff in the reading section and math in math section.
Okay, so you like the organization of that. So that might be something we could care, work on carrying over then. Thank you. That was very helpful. Okay, any other questions for the Craigan family? Well, we thank you so much for coming on and sharing your, your experience with us. This was great. I appreciate knowing how it's going because I haven't had a lot of feedback, because I don't have kids in school, like Rob, he knows what's going on. I, I, it's nice to hear that feedback, especially from the different grade levels. So we really appreciate that. And mom and dad, you keep up the good work because you have three very good boys there. They're very polite, very respectful, nice boys you got there. You're doing a good job, mom and dad.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
You guys have a good night. Go do your homework.
Bye.
Thank you. Well, that was good. I thought there was good feedback on that. So that was, I really liked that. And nice having the different grade levels represented there. I think they did a good job.
Yep. Thank you to Chrissy for helping me pick out the families that had kids in different levels. So that was, Chrissy's helped me with that.
Thank you, Chrissy. That was good. Okay. Um, so that's the only presentation we have for tonight. So then we're going to move on to the, was there any patron input now that I skipped ahead?
There was not as of six o'clock.
No emails? Okay. So we're going to go on then to the action items. In the consent agenda, we have minutes of the previous meeting and HR items. I'd kind of like to, if we can, like break those into two separate things, because there's, I have some questions on the HR items that I think Brooke can answer for us. Is that okay with the other board members? Okay, so can I get, so how do I do that, Chrissy? A motion to approve just the minutes and then the HR items, or do we discuss and can we approve the whole thing?
So there's that disclaimer right at the top of that agenda item that they can be broken up if you'd like. So let's just plan on doing it that way.
Okay. So can I get a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting from the regular meeting of April 14th, 2020? Well, actually, do we have any questions? Yes, Ramona, sorry.
Yeah, Madam Chair, there's a couple of corrections.
Okay.
Um, in the meeting minutes, um, I noticed, let me see where the one is. So one was in Mr. Wallace's presentation. He stated that the district's, can, the 87% of the district's budget was salary, wages, benefits, all that rolled up into one. And I noticed that wasn't in the meeting minutes. Um, and then the other thing is page four, um, there's actually a statement that says trustee Gristem, trustee Grissom stated that she was fully aware, da, da, da. It actually wasn't me. That was trustee Thompson that was having that conversation with Dr. Meyer.
Okay.
I can fix both of those items if you'd like.
Okay, yep. That was, um, let me make sure I didn't make any note. Yep, I think that was it. That was the only thing. Yep, that I, that I saw with the meeting minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Anybody else see anything? No? Okay. So then can I get a, with the corrections then? So can I get a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting from the regular meeting of April 14th, 2020 with the corrections that trustee Grissom presented?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as amended for the April 14th, 2020 meeting.
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on that? Okay, everyone in favor, say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
And then anyone opposed? Bring that motion carry. Okay, and then going on to the HR items. And so there's a furloughed employees part that's new because of what we're doing. So I don't really understand that. So Brooke?
So I, I think that Brian's gonna.
Brian, I'm sorry.
Address that.
Brooke.
Right. Madam Chair, trustees, Dr. Meyer. Yeah, for this month, what we're recommending is, you know, we've avoided furloughing any classified staff so far. We've had a challenge with the base program, which is our before and after school program. Now, that program's funded not by any state dollars or federal dollars. It's all by parent fees who pay for that program. Some parents also do qualify for some payments from the Department of Health and Welfare for childcare if they have certain income levels. But anyway, it's still parent fees. Well, since the closure, we've closed that program. Effectively, what we have done is we've, we've done extended childcare is what we called it for first responders or maybe some of our employees that were doing an essential work, let's say they were preparing meals for our, our grab and go meals, then if they needed someone to watch their child during that time, we did that. And we have not been charging fees. We just said during this time, it's not, we didn't want to charge first responders during this time. So the, the numbers because of that, not only is, you know, you're not getting the revenue, but that's not as big a concern as we, we just haven't had a lot of kids in the program. You know, base program is at all of our elementary schools before and after school. And, you know, hundreds of kids or well over a hundred kids. And now we're down to like 10 kids, six kids some days or less. So we have, each school has a base coordinator. So the structure of base, just to give you a background, there's, we have a director. And then she supervises a coordinator at each school who's sort of the lead base person at Twin Lakes Elementary or Betty Kiefer. And then we have some aides that also help. And some of that staffing is required by the state because we're an approved childcare and there's guidelines that we have to follow for child to adult ratio, supervision ratios. Well, just for right now, with those reduced numbers and likely not really going to ramp up much before June 1, we just, it was hard keeping those staff members busy with alternative activities. Even they were, you know, saying, well, I'm not doing a whole heck of a lot. And so the employees are, you know, generally non-benefited. Um, a few hours a week, you know, maybe 15 hours a week. So we just thought that through the end of the year, they only officially work through the June, like June 8, that if we furloughed them, they actually could probably claim unemployment and actually honestly make more money. We're going to be cognizant, not impact medical benefits. And then if we're able to ramp up, we'll call them back and, and go, because we already have signups for summer base and things like that. But we just think it's sort of the best thing all around that, you know, in the big picture, when we're looking at the furloughs, we've, we've done a really good job, I thought, of keeping our classified staff and our teachers, you know, busy with alternative activities. And they're all, I mean, working pretty hard with the grab and go meals and doing some of these things and cleaning. And there's, things have popped up and people have really, I thought, answered the bell, which is great. It's just been a tough one for us. So that's what our recommendation is. We don't think it's a huge impact. Obviously, whenever you do this, it's no fun, but other districts across the state have been furloughing hundreds of classified staff. And, and we've been able to avoid that, which I think is a credit to our district. But this is our recommendation.
And how many people are we talking?
Uh, I'd have to get the list. What was about?
Was about eight.
I think eight.
Okay.
Um, Brian? Oops, sorry. My cursor's doing weird things and things are popping up. I apologize. Um, you had stated that the base program has been closed since the beginning. Is, was that an accurate statement?
I believe so. Or did we run it through spring break, Dr. Meyer? I, my memory's getting fuzzy.
Yes, we did. We, we ran it through spring break in, for everyone and emergency personnel also for free. So and we actually have kept it open when some people have not been able to offer the emergency, other school districts haven't been able to and we have. So that's something we've done for the community.
Okay, I just asked, because I know at the 324 meeting, I had asked about the base program because of the social distancing and the numbers. And you had stated at that time that the base program was averaging between 15 to 20 and that we were going to be separating them into classrooms with at least nine or less, et cetera. So I was, I was a little thrown by, by this statement that the base has been closed since the beginning. So I just need a.
Yeah, I was, uh, yeah, I understated that. I'm, I'm sorry. I just, there's been a lot going on. I.
I hear you.
Make it the next few months. Anyway, that's right. Through spring break and then when the closure was extended, then we only offered it to first responders.
Okay, yeah. And I was discussing that.
So to clarify, when he said base has been closed, he means to the families, there was only one family and I think two at one point, and then one for families of, when he's saying, talking about base families that are paying. We're, we've kept it open for first responders and medical personnel families the entire time. It's been open the entire time. And it never has been over, I don't know the highest attendance, Brian. I didn't find out this week, but it hasn't been where we needed to be in more than one room at a time.
Okay, I, I was, my understanding that we, that the base, that there was a different program that was being implemented for not, maybe those are incorrect terms, but that we were calling what we were offering. I'm sorry?
Yeah, it's extended child, we called it extended childcare. So that's where the issue, I think, we're, we're talking base versus extended childcare, but we call it the same thing just because it's the same personnel that's covering it. That's where I think confusion is coming in, maybe.
Okay, yeah, that, that would be where. So the actual base program that people actually pay for has been closed since just after spring break. Is that a fair assessment? But yet the extended care has remained in operation for the first responders with no pay, that, that do not pay for the service.
Yes, and we also did not charge when our, we continued with some of our base families, you know, when we did that first two week closure and then spring break. And we did not charge anybody during those three weeks. And there's also a few first responders during that time also.
Okay, I just needed clarification. Thank you.
Okay, so then based on that information, the motion before us is to accept the HR items as presented, which includes the furlough of those base employees. Is that correct in my understanding? Is that correct in my understanding?
Well, I did have a question. Um, the resignation of Courtney Silver as a dance, dance coach, the resignation's on 4/22. Is that due to COVID-19 or is there another reason she's resigning?
Madam Chair, may I address that?
Yes, Brooke, please.
Um, Courtney is actually moving on, um, because she, for her personal life and, um, for higher pay. It has nothing to do with that.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So any other questions on that? Okay, so then can I have a motion to, um, uh, accept the HR items? As presented?
I'll make a motion to accept the HR items as presented.
I'll second the motion.
Have a motion in a second. And Ramona, make sure you unmute. For the vote, there we go. Uh, motion in a second. Everyone in favor say aye and raise your hand?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Bring that motion carry. Okay, on to the main event. Uh, so for tonight, um, uh, I do want to make sure everybody's aware that we did confirm, um, that as of 4:00 PM tonight, there were no additional applicants. And then we, uh, Chrissy Aldit also confirmed that all of the candidates before us are registered voters, which is a requirement for this. Um, so I want to remind you to please take notes if you need to, because my memory isn't great, so I have to take notes. Uh, and I need to keep those notes and, uh, like take a picture and send those to Chrissy for, um, for the, for the minutes or if there's an audit. Um, also, um, the interviews are slated to be about rough, roughly 15 minutes each. At the beginning of each, uh, interview, I'll give them just a brief, um, idea of how it's going to work. Uh, they'll each have the same questions. And, oh, that was a question. Do we want to, how, the questions are going to be pulled up on the screen so they can read it and we can read them all together, because I think it might be hard for us just to read a question and not have them be able to see the question. So I wanted them to be able to read it as well, I think, maybe. Um, but do we want to like take turns asking a question? So like I'll ask the first question and then, I don't know what order. I just, on my screen, Rob could ask the second one, Michelle the third, and Ramona the fourth, and then we go back around. Anyone?
I'm having issues here. Hold on one sec. Sorry about that.
That's okay.
I'm, I'm good either way, but given the fact that, um, I don't want to have technical difficulties, I would be good with just having them read by one person too. It doesn't make any difference to me. I'm more interested in what they have to say.
Yeah, I, I sort of, um, I did have, and I didn't know if we have time for that or if it'd drag on too long with their word. Um, of course, we'll take an amendment to the proposed questions, but I did have a couple other questions. Should I share them and then just, or?
Well, there will be time after, they'll, they'll go through the eight questions and then they'll have, we'll have time to actually ask them a couple others.
Okay.
Like, yeah.
Madam Chair?
No?
We do-
Yeah?
Uh, if you want to add questions, you have to.
Oh, because they have to be the same for everybody.
You, yes, so if, if you, if the board wants to add questions now, then you're gonna, I do not believe that there's going to be enough time. I think this is going to be pushing it to have seven questions in 15 minutes. I'm going to be timing, but if you want to change the questions, then I think, um, that you need to do that now. And all questions have to be the same. The ISBA made that very clear.
Yeah, because we're not all together. This is so weird doing this online and not having them all right in front of us.
Well, okay, it's, did you just state that we're going to be individual, that they're not going to be interviewed at the same time? We're interviewing each one of them in 15-minute segments?
Yes. We got clarification through ISBA that we can do that due to this, uh, format that we're on. As long as every question is the same and they're given the same amount of time for each question.
So then we have to ask all of them the same question? So if we only ask five, then-
Five of each.
Okay.
So, but Ramona, they're not on yet, right? Correct? Nobody has it on? So Ramona, is there maybe a question we need to add that you think is relevant?
Um, well, some of them were just some basic questions, you know, like what does success look like? What motivates you? But a couple that I was interested in is, have you had to deal with any legal issues in past positions that would benefit our board? Or have you had to deal with legal issues in the past positions that would negatively impact our board? You know, whether, I mean, some of, you know, we can, I guess, sort of judge that in talking to them. But I noticed the one gentleman had quite a lengthy involvement. So I mean, it would be interesting to know, you know, do you have any prior legal things we should know about or not? Or maybe we just don't need to ask that. I don't know. It was, it was just a thought.
Okay.
I, uh, can I chime in?
Yes, please, Rob.
Um, just being part of the interview process with the armed guards, um, last year, I think it was. Uh, I don't know if we're bound to specific questions that we can ask about past. I, I'm not sure if that's applicable in this scenario. So we want to tread lightly on what specific details. Want to get ourselves in trouble. And I, and I know that there were some specific guidelines in the interview process with the armed guards. And so I would just raise the question, you know, what we can legally ask them?
Yeah, because we have to tread lightly is making sure that we're like stepping on their legal rights and their right to privacy.
Okay.
Chairman Olmsted, I just would like to reiterate to the board that the interviews are really need to be based on what's the job description of the school board. And the interviews are supposed to be finding the best fit, the best quality fit to identify who would best serve the board in the qualities, characteristics, and the job responsibilities. Um, and I would just, you know, refer everyone back to the training that we've had uh, since January and knowing governance, finance, and looking at that kind of, uh, curriculum and looking at what the board's responsibilities, those are the kind of questions, um, that I think are the, what the board should be asking about to identify the best person. It has to be based on the job responsibility of the board member.
Well, and I'm not, I would, I, the, these questions questions, because these were, we set precedent with these questions. It's been done in the past more than once. That's why we went with these questions.
Uh, okay.
Does that make sense?
Yep, yep, that's, that's fine.
So doing the glitchiness, is everybody okay if I just read the question? I don't want to feel like I'm pushing somebody out. I just, Ramona, you'd get a little glitchy.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's, I'm good with that. Yep, I'm fine.
Yeah, what about you? Do you want to read some of the questions?
No, that's fine.
Okay, so it's going to be the same then? So we have to be fair and equitable to all the candidates. So it's going to be me asking the questions every time. Dr. Meyer's going to time them. And, um, if, if we don't get through all seven, then I can't do all seven for the next one. So they have to have the, it has to be as fair and equitable as possible. So that's what we're striving for. So, ah, this is so weird. So let's see if we can make this work. So are you going to bring, the first one will be, uh, Bob Jones?
And Dr. Meyer, did you receive a request to enter into the meeting from Mr. Jones? He is attempting to join right now, so, um, it may ask Dr. Meyer permission for him to enter into it.
We practiced this with him yes, I think Chrissy practiced with him yesterday, so I'm getting, just on how to get online.
Did you email him the link, Chrissy?
Yeah. He's been emailed the link two times and he said it, it asked him if he could join. So he is, uh, it's asking him for permission to join the meeting.
Okay, so you can, um, just go into the meeting request and add him to that?
I did that as well.
Then I, not sure, because I'll do it from this end?
He is saying he is asking to join right now. Uh, Chairman Olmsted, if you're okay with this, I will send him the phone number so that he can call in as well.
Okay, so then will we not be able to see him?
Um, did, did it work yesterday when you gave him the link?
Worked perfect.
I'm not sure why it wouldn't be working now.
I apologize, but I need to run to the restroom, so I'll be right back.
Okay.
Chairman Olmsted?
Yes, oh, Brian.
I, I just wanted to add, maybe Becky, if you go to that add people and if you-
I did.
And did you do it with his email address or whatever? Yeah?
Yep, I already did that. But the point is, is that shouldn't be needed. If they didn't do that with, I didn't do it yesterday and she ran through it yesterday, then I'm not sure why it wouldn't work the same, but I just put his email and sent it to him. Um-
Yeah, that's weird.
Yeah.
He keeps saying it's asking him to join.
Um, I don't, I'm not sure what that means because-
Click the join button.
You know the green button that says join on Google? Just put in the join. Do you want to call him, um, Chrissy, so that you can have a conversation? Just remind him that it's that green join button that, when you guys practiced, um, it'd be that button.
Okay, I can see him. There we go. Hi, hi, Mr. Jones.
Hi there, how are you?
Hey, nice to see you.
Nice to see you.
Well, welcome to this unusual platform and welcome.
This is, uh, this is pretty high-tech for an old farm boy.
Well, we appreciate you joining us and for your interest in joining the school board. So how this is going to work is, um, Dr. Meyer's going to put the questions up on the screen. So you should be able to read the questions. I'm going to read them each, uh, I'll read each question as well, but I want you to be able to see them if you can. Um, and I'll read each question and then you'll have, you only have about two to three minutes to answer it, okay? So we're going to time you, so you got to kind of be short and succinct with your answers, okay?
I can do that.
Okay, wonderful.
Chairman Olmsted, I'm just for a point of, uh, Chrissy, am I putting them up, present now? Okay.
We're kind of in this together, Mr. Jones.
Okay, I'm, I'm watching. Ooh, that's small print.
Oh, wait. There we go. Okay, Mr. Jones, can you see the question?
I can see them, yes.
Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and read the first one, okay?
Okay.
So, uh, I guess actually state your name for the record.
Bob Jones.
Thank you. We know that, but just want to make sure. Um, uh, so why do you want to be a school board trustee? And what are the strongest character traits and skills you feel will support the board?
Well, uh, you know, I'd, I'd like to be a trustee, uh, to get back involved with the school district. You know, I had a lot of years, uh, serving the school district. I've always had a lot of interest in the community and the school system. And, uh, you know, uh, it's, it's, uh, an opportunity for me to kind of be on the other side of things, having been a superintendent for a number of years. And, uh, with respect to, uh, character traits, you know, I think, uh, you know, I'm, I'm honest and straightforward and, uh, uh, have good communication skills, so I think I would be an asset to the board.
Good. Okay, is that, I don't want to cut you off, but I don't want you to sit there. This is so-
That's fine.
Doing this online. Okay. Uh, number two, what do you perceive as the proper role of a board member in the relationship with staff, administration, and the public?
Well, the role of a, of board members, uh, is, uh, you know, to be a policy-setting, uh, group and to have oversight. Board members represent, you know, all the constituencies from students and staff and, uh, and certainly the patrons and taxpayers of the district. And so I think the role of the board is to try to serve all of those entities, all of those constituencies in the, the best way possible. Number three?
Yep, okay. I don't want to cut you off, but I want to keep going. Okay, number three, what do you see as the basic purpose of public schools?
Well, public schools are, have been vitally important for the length of the, uh, history of our country. A, a, a well-educated public is essential to the success of a democracy. And, uh, I think public schools have always, uh, served that role, uh, in, in the best way possible. And I would look forward to being a part of that once again.
Okay. Okay, number four, given a controversial issue, how would you gather data and information to make an informed decision?
Well, controversial issues can come along, uh, in school systems. I, I certainly know that. Gathering information would be a matter of, of listening to all the parties who have a vested interest, I think. And, and, uh, if, if there are ways to collect data, then that ought to happen too. The important thing is to try to hear all sides of, of an issue, uh, and to then deliberate and try to come to an informed decision.
Okay. Number five, what long-range plan would you want to implement for the school district?
Well, I wouldn't have anything uh specific, I I'm vitally interested in uh you know, what the district is doing in terms of of long-range planning for facilities and I have a lot of experience and I think some expertise that would be helpful to the board. And you know, however I could o- offer that uh input and offer that experience uh going forward, I think that would be something that I would welcome the opportunity to.
Number six, do you have any specific changes you want to make to make in school district policies or programs?
No, I wouldn't have any uh any specific things uh going in, it may be that, you know, after I've sat on the board for a while, there would be some things that would come up that would be of interest to to change. But policies I know are 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 s- set and and need to be followed uh and changed only if circumstances change that require the policy to be changed. With respect to programs, I think the district has done an outstanding job in in providing good, solid programs to students and that's really what uh the the whole system is about, so as long as as long as we can do that, I think we're in good shape.
And number seven, do you have any pecuniary pecuniary interest with Lakeland Joint School District or K-Tech? This also includes direct relatives that have financial interests that would create a conflict in your role as a trustee?
No, I have no no interest uh of of that type, I have a lot of interest in the school district and and K-Tech is close to my heart, I was very involved in the origins of K-Tech, clear back to when Riverbend Academy was started. Along with the superintendent from Post Falls and from Port Alene and and uh Bob Bennett, who was president of NIC at the time, we did a lot of work to get K-Tech started and Brad Murray did a great job of of bringing it along and and uh K-Tech was the the original vision, but it tooks took some time to bring all that together and to implement it and it's it's a terrific program, I'm a real believer in K-Tech.
Very good. Well, that's all the questions we have, so I appreciate you joining us in this very strange time. Um so uh we're going to um how this is gonna work is we'll listen to the other candidates, they'll be interviewed and then the board will discuss and that will be recorded, so you'll be able to watch that later. And then we're gonna do a ballot vote and vote and then uh Chrissy is going to let everyone know uh the outcome this evening.
Okay, well, I'm sorry I can't be there in person to meet everybody and.
Us too.
But anyway, this is an interesting way to do it.
Very. Well, we appreciate your patience and understanding and I hope you have a very good evening.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. I think you have to hit the red phone at the bottom. There's a red phone, looks like a little headset, there you go. How long did that? Okay, that was fast. Okay, so Chrissy, are you getting uh I'm.
Debbie Major is our next candidate and yes, I am just waiting for her to join.
Okay, that went a lot faster than I anticipated, so. Does anybody want to chime in, anything I should do different? I mean, not like.
I think you did.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I think you did good, yeah, you did, that was perfect, I think, just the way you did it.
Okay.
I realize it's not something that can be implemented now, but shouldn't we be asking them if they want if they have any questions for us?
Well, yeah, probably too late now. Okay. Yeah, this is so hard online. It's a lot better if people in person.
Chairman Olstead, um your next candidate is on the call.
Okay, and is this Debbie Major?
Yes, and it looks like she is on mute, Debbie, you'll have to unmute yourself.
Okay. How do I see? Can you hear me, Debbie? Okay, I see you. I don't know, can you hear me? Debbie, can you hear us? Okay, so down at the bottom, don't touch the red phone, there's a microphone next to it, click on that. I don't know how to fix that.
You can also Debbie, you can also where your picture's showing up, you can hit that little microphone button. Or if you just run your mouse back and forth, up and down on the very bottom, it'll bring up a long big thing that has it and then.
There we go, success, yay, I apologize. I do Zoom a lot, but not this one, so thank you for your patience with me. We're we're all learning this together, this is. We're all together, but this is where we're at right now, so we appreciate your understanding with this format and uh welcome, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
So how this is gonna work, uh I'm going to ask you seven questions, they'll be brought up on the screen, so you'll be able to read them as well, but I'll ask the question and then you'll have approximately two minutes per question to answer, because we don't have a lot of time.
Sure.
Then at the end, uh the board will have a discussion. Uh that will be recorded, uh so you can do that later when it's posted and then the clerk is going to um let everyone know this evening the outcome.
Super, that sounds great, thank you.
So nice to see you, okay.
See you.
So I think Dr. Myers is going to bring up the questions, there we. Okay, can you see the questions, Debbie?
I can, yes.
Sorry. Okay. So I'll read the first one, so why do you want to be a school board trustee? And what are the strongest character traits and skills you feel will support the board?
Sure, I uh really love serving in our little community here and I just really feel like I could make a difference uh serving on the board. I feel like the character traits that I have are good reasoning skills, I I believe that I am good at communicating and working through issues and problems that arise that um would normally end in conflict, they usually uh I usually seem to be pretty good at finding a way to navigate that and helping people come to a good agreement on uh a medium ground. And I feel like that would support the board um in terms of I I uh would bring a unique perspective in terms that as I'm sure you've seen from my resume, I homeschool my kids, so and my kids have also been in public school, so we have kind of a really good uh foot in, you know, in both areas and it'd be a really good representation of everybody in the county.
Good. Okay. Question two, what do you perceive as the proper role of a board member in their relationship with staff, administration and the public?
A proper role, well, I believe that they are just um a voice to come together and um voice their opinion and give their thoughts on things and the uh the role is an individual one in terms of your own opinion, but yet as a group, you all come together and make a decision together. So that um would be my answer to that question.
Number three, what do you see as the basic purpose of public school?
Sure, um I believe public schools are s- are so important. I think that the basic purpose obviously is to educate our children and get them to a point where if they choose to pursue a higher education, they can or or trade school, but I would say to equip them with the education that they need to uh be a functioning member of society and a successful adult.
Number four, given a controversial issue, how would you gather data and information to make an informed decision?
I think it's really important that you know both sides of an issue, so uh I personally would probably um ask some opinions of people who are around me, seek out maybe an opposite opinion of maybe one that I might have, so that I could understand someone else's perspective and get a good um uh broad perspective from all kinds of ideas and different um people who would have a different say on things, as well as obviously reading up and uh doing the research that would be necessary, whether it be online or whether it be through articles or whatever written materials might be available as well.
Okay, five, what long-range plan would you want to implement for the school district?
Well, I would say that it's um really imperative to find a way to support the educators there and enable them to do their job in the most effective way that they could, as well as to uh serve the community and the children meeting that goal we talked about earlier of of educating them and and preparing them for life.
Six, what do or sorry, wow, let's play that again. Do you have any specific changes you want to make in school district policies or programs?
You know, I do not have an agenda to change any policies or programs. My agenda is to serve the community in in this capacity, so at this point, I do not have any specific changes or agendas, no.
Seven, do you have any pecuniary interest with Lakeland Joint School District or K-Tech? This also includes direct relatives that have financial interests that would create a conflict in your role as a trustee?
Nope, I don't.
Short, sweet and simple. Okay, that's all the questions we have, so we really appreciate your time and and stick with like this and uh we look forward to letting you know later this evening.
All right, thank you so much, it was nice to see your face. All right, goodbye.
So it looks like they're all taking about the same amount of time, so that's good. Okay. So Samantha is next. Nope, I think Debbie's still on. Can you see me? I think so, oh, there we go. So Samantha Tesk- I I'm gonna what's how do you say your last name? Is it Samantha Teskin?
Okay, sorry, I can hear you now, I had to adjust the audio. I'm sorry.
So can you introduce yourself?
Yes, um hi, my name's Samantha Tushkhan, um how much do you want me to say, just my name?
Yeah, we we've gotten your application and your resume, okay? So this is gonna work as well, I'm gonna ask you seven questions, the questions will also be up on the screen, so you can read them as well. And then uh you'll have approximately two minutes to answer each question. And then uh when that's done, uh when everybody is done being interviewed, the board's going to uh discuss will make a decision and then the clerk is going to call everybody and let them know the results tonight.
Okay.
Okay, thank you for joining, nice to see you. Better be in person, but we're working with this. Okay. Can you see the questions on your screen?
Yes, I can.
Okay, so question one, why do you want to be a school board trustee? And what are the strongest character traits and skills you feel will support the board?
Yeah, so um I would like to be a school board trustee because I feel that I have a well-rounded experience that allows me to advocate for the needs of families, children and teachers, as well as I feel that I have strong characters that um make me passionate about early care and education. Um I'm a strong leader and um uh dependable as well. The um my background, um you saw my resume, my background um makes me have a lot of different experiences that I can bring to the table to add to the board.
Okay, number two, what do you perceive as the proper role of a board member in their relationship with staff, administration and the public?
Um to break that up a little bit, that I believe that um the proper role with um a board member for relationship with staff is to be able to provide um somebody who's um listening to their needs and their wants to advocate for them. Also for administration, I guess administration and the public as well, we're here to serve and provide um information to them, to listen to them and to advocate for their needs and and make decisions that um are in the best interest for the community, for the school.
What do you see as the basic purpose of public schools?
Um public's the basic purpose for public schools is to um help to ensure that our children are getting the needs that met as the whole child providing culture di- cultural diverse learning and making sure that they're um really needing the needs um not just to graduate, but to succeed in the community and provide citizens that are able to give back. As well as if they choose to go on to higher education, which hopefully that's the the ultimate goal is that go on, right, but that they're able just to be um good citizens in our community.
Number four, given a controversial issue, how would you gather data and information to make an informed decision?
So the role that I live in in my job right now and how I have data is what we're driven by. So I feel that it's important to look at all the different ways that we have data and in the schools, there are so many different ways that we can gather data to help inform our decisions, whether it's um just analytical data, um looking at our ISATs and um IRI and things like that, or if it's um informational data, um going out, if it's things like um the decision to um build a new school, we can go out and a- ask the questions to the communities, get their input. So all of those version versions of data help inform our decisions and move forward in the way that we're supposed to. Um but I think data needs to drive and be a big backing in the decisions that we make and um and really reflecting and decide and using that to help inform our decisions.
Okay. Number five, what long-range plan would you want to implement for the school district?
Um I agree with a lot of what the school districts currently doing and really looking at um the missions of um the way that I would kind of um generalize the mission is looking at the whole child, um including the family and so um I would really want to continue to support that mission that the school district has, that's why I do what I do, my background is in education, I've been doing it for seventeen years. And I think if you don't um look at the whole child, including the community, the family and what's best for the child in that in social, emotional, academic and on, um then you're you're losing a lot for that child specifically, so that is a plan that long-range that I think we need to continue, but also looking at the growth of our community that we need to support our children in smaller class sizes, um things like that, in order to do that, we have to look at our structural support for our schools as well. So making sure that our community understands the importance of education, that's one of the things I advocate in my. That's one of the things I advocate in my role currently, is helping the community understand what early childhood education means and what the importance of that is. So long-range and make sure that we just have that guy in for our community and how I can support that.
Number six, do you have any specific changes you want to make in school district policies or programs?
Not specifically in policies, but programs. I would like to see how I could specifically support. I know that they've been working on implementing behavioral supports in the schools, and my background is in trauma-informed care. So just ways that I can help strengthen and support that program into the schools. I know that they've started working on that. But if I can help support in this role and L in bringing additional support in that program efforts into the school.
And then seven, do you have any pecuniary interest with Lakeland Joint School District or K-Tech? This also includes direct relatives that have financial interests that would create a conflict in your role as a trustee?
I do not.
Short and sweet, love it. Okay, that's all we have for you tonight. We sure appreciate you joining us today.
Well, those were pure easy ones.
Well, good. So, thank you so much for joining us, and we'll let you know later this evening.
Well, I really appreciate your guys' time. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Bye.
Okay, one more. There we go. There we go. Hello, Ms. Bennett, can you hear us? Or me? Oh, there we go.
Let me turn my volume up just one second. Okay.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Good, I can hear you too. Can you see everybody?
I think so, let me. Yeah, I think so.
Okay, so welcome. We appreciate you joining us in this strange format. We appreciate you doing this with us. So what's gonna happen is I'm gonna ask you seven questions, the same seven questions. Dr. Meyer is gonna bring those questions up, so you can read them as well, but I'll read them to you. You'll have approximately two minutes per question to answer. And then when everybody is done interviewing, then we'll, the board will discuss, will make a decision, and then the clerk is going to contact everyone and let them know the results tonight.
Okay.
Okay?
Yes.
Good. Okay, can you see the questions?
Um, yes.
Okay, so I'm gonna read number one. What do you want, or, sorry, I can't even read anymore. Why do you want to be a school board trustee? And what are the strongest character traits and skills you feel will support the board?
So my biggest why is I have three children in this school district right now, currently a sixth grader, a fifth grader, and a second grader, all attending John Brown. And I wanna make sure they have a great education, just like what I got. I'm a Lakeland graduate myself. I'm very passionate about leading. If you looked at my resume, you'll see that I added all my leadership stuff on there. And, let's see, a strong character trait, which would be, that I'm just passionate about my kids and their education and other people's kids. I'm the PTU president right now at John Brown. So I have a big, big heart for those kids. Let's see, did I get it all? I feel like I will support the board by bringing a voice to Zone Five. I know there's a lot of people, maybe in just my little area of where I live, that don't know what's going on with the school board and with the education and the growth that's happening in the community. And I just wanna help them to know what is happening in Zone Five.
Number two, what do you perceive as the proper role of a board member in their relationship with staff, administration, and the public?
Um, a proper role may be that as a board member, you would listen to staff concerns, and that would maybe coincide with certain policies that are in place and help them understand, you know, what, if there's a situation of things that could be done, or if they don't know what the policy is, to point them in the direction of which policy would best suit that situation. As far as administration, maybe help them to understand what was, what their concerns are, or to understand what their concerns are and to address them as a board, as a team. And as far as the public, just educating them on certain topics that they may bring up, or listen to their concerns and try to resolve whatever the issue is for that specific topic.
I never wanna cut you off, so.
I know, I don't know.
So if I cut you off, you say, I need something else there, okay? Okay, but I don't want you to just sit there either. Number three, what do you see as the basic purpose of public schools?
The basic public, the basic purpose of public schools is to make sure all the kids in that district are educated, make sure they're ready for life after high school, after, you know, after college. Make sure that they have the tools that they need to succeed, whether it be educational, what's the word I'm looking for, mental health. Make sure they have good mental health. Make sure they, they know how to succeed in life.
Okay. Four, given a controversial issue, how would you gather data and information to make an informed decision?
How controversial? Any sort, or?
It can be small to big. Nothing specific, just.
Let's see here. I know research is key. I did attend one of the Long Range Planning Committee meetings and saw some of the data that they created and gathered so that they could present their plans. The information, to make an informed decision, the information that you would need or gather for that, to make the decision, would just, I think it would just depend on the issue and how you would get it out to the public so that they could, you know, perceive it in their own way. I don't know how else to answer that question.
It's okay, you did great. Okay, number five, what long-range plan would you want to implement for the school district?
Long-range plan. I know we have some overcrowding issues. That's one of the big concerns that I've been seeing as a parent with a current sixth grader going to the seventh grade and a current fifth grader at John Brown possibly going to the junior high with her seventh grade sister. That kinda eases my mind as a seventh grade parent, so that they would go together and she probably doesn't want to go with her sister, but that's okay with me. I know we have good growth in here, in our, in our school district. There's a lot of houses being built. There's a lot of zoning and planning changing over off of Meyer. So I think the biggest long-range plan that we, that we need to implement is the overcrowding.
Number six, do you have any specific changes you want to make in school district policies or programs?
Specific changes? I don't know of any policies that really need change. I did go back and watch the one video when you guys talked about the COVID policies and how they apply. And those seem to be pretty self-explanatory as far as what they would cover and maybe as far as maybe the PTUs and the PTOs, they might need a little more support from the school district. A little more recognition, maybe.
Okay.
That's it. My husband's trying to eat a bag of chips. I'm like, no, don't do that right now.
That's okay. My dog is growling in the back, so it's okay. All right, last one. Do you have any pecuniary interest with Lakeland Joint School District or K-Tech? This also includes direct relatives that have financial interests that would create a conflict in your role as a trustee?
No, not unless some millionaire wants to leave me something. I don't think so.
Okay. Great, all right. So that's all we have for you. We sure appreciate you joining us. And like I said, we're now going to discuss this board and we'll make a decision, and Chrissy will let you know the results of that.
Tonight or tomorrow, or? Okay, you're not gonna make me stress out all night.
Not at all. We'll try to get this out to you as soon as we can, so.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you for joining us. We sure appreciate your interest. You have a good night.
See ya.
Bye. Okay. Actually, everybody was really close in time on that. So, and I tried really hard not to make any commentary after their answers. It's hard not to give people, you know, an attaboy or good answer, okay. That's really hard not to do. Oh, I don't like this. I like having a dialogue. So people can unmute now.
Okay.
Okay, so we need to discuss the candidates. And like I said, if you took notes, which I did, because I have a hard time remembering, we need to make sure we keep a copy of those notes and get those to Chrissy for the public record. So we're gonna have a discussion. It's just easier for important to do this. So I don't know, do you want me to start and give you my thoughts? Or does somebody else plan to start and give thoughts?
Are we gonna go in the order in which they interviewed? Is that how we're gonna do?
I was just gonna go through each one and get, I wanna keep it positive if we can. I like positive comments. Maybe the positives about each and why maybe you feel one might be a good choice. So like, so, for like Mr. Jones, you know, he's got a lot of years of experience running a district. He does know a lot about policy and oversight and all that. I feel he is, you know, that, that experience, he's got a lot of. Ms. Major, I don't know if it was a Mrs., sorry. I like that she was willing to look at both sides of an issue. I like the fact that she said she wanted to give an opposite opinion so that she could see, really get to know both sides of an issue. Because really, it's hard, sometimes we get stuck in our little bubble and it's hard to play devil's advocate for ourselves. So sometimes reaching out and getting that opposite opinion, I kinda like that about her. She did say she has good reasoning skills and is good at communicating. It's very important. I can't say her last name. I call it Tuskin, but that's not how she pronounced it. Tuskin, Tuskin?
Tushkan.
Tushkan, okay. I'm a Star Wars person, so it looks like Tuskin, like a Tuskin Raider. I don't know if anybody else gets that reference, but I think Ramona did. I like Star Wars. I like that she, I really liked her, well, of course, she kinda spoke to me when she basically brought up our mission statement, which means she kinda did her research. She honed in on that. She wants to, she really talked about, about being there for the kids and advocating for the children. And I think she was like one of the only ones that really kept bringing it back to the kids, because really ultimately, that's what we're here for. So I really liked the way she wanted to support, you know, the whole child, because that's really, that's just, kept going back to our why. So that spoke to me a lot. And then Sarah Bennett. Well, and then also, I think the last both have kids in the district, which I like having kids in the district, because Rob has a different perspective, because he's got kids in the district. The last two, Samantha and Sarah, I'm not gonna do last names, sorry. They have kids in the district, so I think they can bring that perspective of, you know, having the younger kids and what's that like? And the one, the last one, Ms. Bennett, you know, she has those kids. She wasn't too sure on some of the questions, but she, I like that she wants, I think she, she wants to be that voice. She wants to listen to staff concerns. I, I think she, she would listen to people really well. So that was kinda my take, so. So somebody else?
Well, I, I'll go with you, Bob Jones. It was nice to hear him too for the same thing, because I'm thinking, you know, who are we replacing? And it's almost seemed like a swap, you know, right? He just slide right in. And he does have a lot of experience, which, you know, as a new member, I would appreciate. And then he, that was good. And then Debbie Major, oh, yep, she was the ones where they, she was like a home, the homeschool mom, or she's done both of them, and she said that she, she liked, like you said, knowing the other side and that she liked working through the issues and the problems. She liked, and that's not my strength, she likes working in conflict, you know, through the conflict. So I can appreciate that. Yeah, and the same thing, you know, gathering all of her data and pretty much to see, you know, able to serve her community. Samantha, obviously, you know, maybe we should invite her to apply for a position with the district, because, I mean, she, well, she has 17 years as an educator. She had, I mean, you know, she really has the educator's perspective on, on all these things. And what was the thing that she brought up? The, oh, the behavior support.
Yeah.
The trauma-informed care, yeah, that was the other thing that stood out to me with her. And then also Sarah Bennett with it, she seems to be very, very involved with her children and her school and what's going on in her community. And so that was, that was pretty refreshing, especially with, what did she have, three children? So that's a lot of work, you know, and she was positive. And also in almost everything she addressed, I noticed that too, especially with the, wasn't she the one with the fifth and sixth graders? Yeah, making the transition to the junior high.
Yeah.
So yeah, they, they all definitely have their pluses, that's for sure. I, I, yeah, it's, that's a hard decision. You have to just keep going back over it, I guess.
I'm trying to see, did Samantha, she had kids, I thought. Thought she had kids in our district. I don't see, I thought I read that she had three too.
I think that she said that.
Okay.
She had, she did have three kids.
Yeah.
In the district as well.
Yeah. Yeah. Because I I like them having kids. I I didn't hone in on that, all that educational background she had. That's Okay. Michelle or Ramona, were you done? I'm sorry, I don't wanna cut you off.
Yeah, I know, I'm good. I'm good. Yep.
And it's not like we're like done discussing, I'm just.
Right, right.
Okay. Michelle, you wanna?
Uh, well, I think they're all uh very qualified individuals. Um, that could each bring a lot of good characteristics to the board. That's it. Robbie, you can talk.
I um, I was actually pretty it was refreshing to know that there were four candidates. I didn't anticipate that there would be four candidates.
Yeah.
And each of them has a, brings something positive. Each has a different skill set, I think, that would benefit the uh the school district um in in different ways. And I guess um, you know, obviously Bob's got a lot of experience. When I ran, when I ran, I went up against a guy that um had a lot of experience, much, much more experience than I had. In fact, is that uh during the interview process, I I was told, I was, I wanted to vote for him. I was looking at him thinking, man, this guy's got it all. But you know, that doesn't always make uh make the decision final because of the experience, because a lot of times um, you know, school districts change and our needs change as our communities grow and society changes. But but he has got some great strengths that we may need in the years to come. Uh, like I say, all of them have unique strengths, I think, that we could utilize. And I would think, in my mind, even if we do, because we can only elect one
Right.
to uh keep the information, because they obviously wanna support the school district, is to maybe pull them in on certain um certain projects, uh community projects that would get them involved, because I think each of them has something to offer. Uh, Debbie, she seemed like she was a good communicator. Um, and she seemed like she wanted to find, you know, the middle ground. That's what I her.
Yeah.
And um she seemed well-rounded, very nice woman. Um, I think that she did wanna represent uh you know, her community uh as best as she could. Samantha, she was was very polished, very impressive to me. Um, as an advocate for the kids, you know, they're well-rounded, you know, not just their education, but their social emotional needs. But what struck me about her was was citizenship. I mean, that's something that you know, that's um one of the reasons why I ran was really because you know, the kids are gonna get an education, good, bad, or indifferent. They're gonna get education. They're gonna learn how to read. They're gonna learn how to write. They're gonna learn how to um do uh math. But to do, my concern is is the the future of not just our community, but our country. And we need um good citizens. And so that's why I ran was because, you know, I raised my girls a certain way and um I just think it's important that to have a strong community of people that are empathetic for other people and they want the community as a whole to to succeed. Um, so you know, that struck me with um Samantha.
That's why she spoke to me.
But the the she championed that. And then Sarah, she she seemed she seemed so genuine and so she so down to earth and she was, you know, a lifelong community member. And um, I I think that she would absolutely you know, have the interests of the community, the local community at her at heart. That would be the frontrunner for for what she was championing. My only question is um, from what I understood from her resume, she does work in some capacity for the school district. I don't know if that's actually a conflict of interest or not.
Well, it sounds like she technically works for Chartwells, so there would be any issues that come up with Chartwells, there would have to be, she'd have to recuse herself.
And then um, the custodial factor, I didn't know if she still did some of that stuff, because that would technically be part of the school district.
Uh Chairman Olmstead and board members, we've already checked all of that prior to accepting people into an interview. None of them have a conflict of interest as far as employment with the district.
Okay, I just, I I was just confused because it said something about the custodial. I didn't know if that was, you know, like sub, you know, subbing or filling in or any of that kinda stuff. So I I just wanted to make sure.
Chairman Olmstead, can I add? That's correct. It was in a substitute capacity or guest custodian capacity in which she is no longer doing.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. So yeah, I mean, I think they they all have their strengths. Um, I certainly I really appreciate that Sarah is president of PTU. I mean, that's kind of an important role too. So I mean, she understands the 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 aspect of the volunteerism. So you know, i- i- this, it's good to have some good choices. I still would like to um definitely I'm obviously, I I feel pretty wrong about a couple of them, but I think that they all can help us out in some capacity. And I wanna be able to reach out to them, you know, to pull them in on some some projects too.
Yeah.
So that's my two cents. Actually, that was more like a dollar fifteen, but.
Very well spent.
So any other, you wanna talk about anything else? Just anyway, it's so much better if we could be in person doing this, but it is very awkward when you're sitting there and they're talking about you.
It is, yes. Especially when you like your candidate.
You brought some new blood into it. It was good.
I did that.
Anything anybody else wants to add? Okay, so does that mean we're ready to vote? Okay, so what you need to do is you need to write your choice on your ballot. You need to sign it and date it. When everybody signals that they're ready, we'll count to three and we'll all hold them up together. You think, take a picture of it, and we're gonna send that to Chrissy. Vote will be counted uh here in the meeting on the screen, so we need all be at the same time as we can. To make sure that it's printed nice and clear and to be read, and then sign and date it.
And the ballot goes one through four with one being top choice. Is that correct?
No, this is just a straight ballot. We're not doing the ranking. We're going with the president due to the we talked to ISBA, we talked to David, we've set a precedent. The last two appointments were done by a ballot vote. And we're just gonna do a ballot vote.
Right, so we're just putting who we want then?
Yes, just one name.
Okay.
It's the twenty-eighth, right?
Yes, it is. I had to look.
Well, this is hard. Okay, I gotta only pick one.
Yeah.
Um, what will we do if we each pick a different candidate?
Um, well, it's like, so we've gone through every possible outcome, so if like it's a obviously, the one with the most vo- votes wins. If it's a two-to-two tie, then Chrissy is going to do a coin toss, which Rob and I are familiar with. We're gonna do a coin toss according to Idaho law. And uh the winner, the one who um submitted their application the earliest in that tie, they pick and they'll call. And then Chrissy is going to do it in view of the camera, and her husband is also gonna record it on the phone, so that it's completely recorded, so there's no question on what the coin toss was. Um, the same with a, and the only other time that would come into play is if it's a one-one-one-one tie. And then we'd have to have basically three coin tosses. You'd do one and two, three and four. They'd both flip. The winner of those would then, yeah. So let's just hope it's not a one-one-one-one. Because that gets really complicated. So does everybody have a? A no rush. There is no rush. Take your time. This is a big decision.
Yeah, it's a, it's a lot, you know, like Rob was saying, every one of them have something, you know, if you could just like meld a little bit of this here and there, then.
Yeah. This person will be in place until uh the election in November of twenty twenty-one.
Okay.
And then they'll come up for election, just like everybody else.
Okay.
So then even if somebody doesn't win tonight, if they wanna throw their hat in at that point, that's And you can go back through their resumes. You can, you know, go back through their application. You have all that in your packet.
Okay, yeah.
And if we need to have further discussion or something?
I guess part of what I'm trying to figure out is, you know, as of, this is makes it hard, because they all have such good qualifications. But you know, as a board, you know, like what is the board's future and what is the board, you know, how is this person gonna you know, help the board? I mean, they all have great ideas, but I guess that's where I'm, it's hard to
Yeah.
rate that out if you're looking at the board's role.
Yes.
You know.
And I appreciate you looking at it that way, because that's, that's what we're trying to fill is that board position, and they have to fit that role.
Right.
Because like I said, they're all four really good candidates and it's they all had very good positives.
Yes, yes.
Well, if it's any consolation, I I studied all of the resumes and the letters that they wrote um when I was prepping and reading through all the stuff. And really, for me, it was a matter of who when they were answering the questions, who struck me.
Right.
They all are qualified. So I'm, you know, I'm basing my decision on um the impression that I got, because they're all pretty good on paper.
Yeah.
They're all gonna do the job. So I, you know, I base, I I just base my judgment on the impression I got um from from them. So I don't think necessarily that we can make a bad choice here, because they're, they all have strengths. So I would just say, you know, you vote your conscience and who who struck you? You know, who who sparkled?
Yeah, and some sparkled more on paper than in person.
That was great.
It's good to laugh, isn't it?
It is. It really is. Thank you.
Okay, I'm I'm good, I guess. I'm done.
So we write the names, sign it, and date it?
Okay. Feel like the big reveal and if we get it wrong or not.
Okay, is everybody ready? Yes? Okay, alright, three, two, one. Oops, can we read it? I can't read Rob's. I can't read them. Can you read them, Chrissy? I can't.
I can't read Michelle's. I can read everybody else. Right up there, Michelle. We, it appears that we have a two-two tie, Michelle with Debbie and Ramona with Debbie. And then Rob and Chairman Olmstead, I'm sorry, I'm, I should call them trustees. Both with Samantha.
Then yeah, it comes down to a coin toss again.
And trustees, can I remind you to please take pictures of those and send those my way?
How to attach a picture? Alright, Chrissy, it all comes down to you.
Yes, the plus. So um, in these rules, the two-two vote would come to a coin flip with the earliest of the two applicants calling the flip. Would you like me to call the earliest of the two applicants so they can make that call? Is that how you want to proceed?
Can they both be on? So they both see it? I don't know. What?
Well, didn't we tell them we would call them with who the winner was?
Yeah, but we, I didn't, I don't mean that we had to have somebody call the flip.
Right.
When we were in person, that was easy. We were there.
Okay.
And we said the earliest applicant would call the flip, so I think that's Debbie. Or Ms. Major, sorry. So she needs to call it. But do we need to let Samantha in on that? Or just do the flip with Debbie and?
The simple rule says that the earliest of the two will call the flip.
Okay, so yeah. You have to call her and ask her to.
I'm gonna pu- put this on mute while I connect the phone call, and then I'll take myself off. And the candidate is not answering the phone.
Um, should you try and text her?
Looks like maybe she called back.
She's coming to the line. Hold, hold on just a minute. And trustees, just so you all know, and Chairman Olmstead, my daughter's in the room and she will um, you have your phone? Please go get it for Danny's real quick. She will video and I, hi Debbie, this is Chrissy, the clerk at Lakeland.
Hey!
So our trustees have voted and it has come to a tie. And the rules on that vote are that um, the person who turned their application in the earliest gets to call on the coin toss. So in just a second, I'm gonna have you call heads or tails while we flip a coin.
Okay.
And Chairman Olmstead, just so um, we clarify for everybody, uh, whichever um, side of the coin Ms. Major calls, if that is the side of the coin, she would be the winner.
Yes.
Okay?
Okay.
Okay, so I am for the, the virtual platform uh, sake, I'm gonna hold up my coin. I have a quarter. I hope you can all see it. Here's the heads and the bat. It's a 2019. Um, it looks like San Antonio mission quarter. So uh, we will have a whole video of it, which will be posted with our minutes for the next meeting. And Sam, if you would make sure you're videoing right now? And do you agree that it's a quarter, front and back? Okay, and Debbie, what would you like to call?
Heads.
Debbie Major's called heads and I'll flip the coin and hopefully it works well. And it is heads. Would you please zoom in on that? And I'm going to point my monitor. Oh, it won't point down very much, but I will pick it up carefully and it is heads.
Okay, and that was recorded on the phone, correct?
Recorded on the phone. And can you please verify that that got recorded?
Yeah.
Okay. Debbie, it was heads, just so you know. Okay, I'm gonna hang up with you right now, if you don't mind, and I will call you back a little later.
Alrighty, thank you so much.
Thanks Debbie.
Okay.
Bye.
Goodbye.
Could everybody hear that okay?
Yes.
I know you couldn't see it okay, and this is difficult, but um, we'll make sure that recording is posted as well.
Okay. And there we go. Okay. All right. Well, that was interesting and and I think she's gonna do great. I think she was good. It was a hard choice, so.
That was, that was the third coin toss in a row, wasn't it?
Yeah. I don't remember what you won, but I went on head. Did you win on head?
I do not remember.
Why do I still have the quarter? Okay, alrighty. So now um, do we need, we need to do an action item to appoint them? Why didn't get that far?
So my minutes would reflect that she was appointed by va- ballot and then a subsequent coin toss.
Okay, okay. Cause I'm like, I don't think we do any kind of vote because we did that. Okay. All right. So are we good to move on? Okay, on to the COVID-19 closure. And this is gonna be on um, every board meeting.
So just like, thank you, board members. Uh, just like we said when this first went into place, I will do a um, quick, very quick update every meeting. Um, just letting the board know that we did get the specifics about the 1% holdback this year. And um, Mr. Wallace and the budget team is uh, working on that as we speak. We do have uh, the 5% holdback we've been directed to have for next year's budget. Uh, the governor's supposed to be making an announcement on Friday, this Friday, May 1st. Uh, I want you to know that there is, um, as you heard from the three students earlier um, on the board meeting, we really are having uh, feedback on both sides of a polarity. There are some families who feel like there's too much and there's a lot already going on and it's too uh, too much and too much expectations from uh, staff and they're having a hard time balancing. And then I have other parents who've contacted me that are the other side of the coin, no pun intended, but they wish that there could be more interaction and they wish there could be more uh, expectations and deeper expectations. So it's really uh, hard to find that balance, especially when it's in a completely remote distance learning environment. We do have several families we're bringing packets to as well though. But I want to just reiterate what I said last meeting, that the staff is and amazing um, our staff and what they're able to provide. I think at the heart of everything is our daily mission, which is really that every student is maximizing their learning and growing every day, uh, social, emotionally, behaviorally and academically. And that I believe is really at the heart of what's going on with the teachers. So they care so much that sometimes they may be providing too much, but we are discussing that as an admin team and as a staff and they're really trying to find that sweet spot. And I just want you to know that you would be really proud of what the teachers are doing. You heard some of the students speak about a learning, the parents speak about a learning contin- they didn't say the words learning continuum, but what they were saying when you have the lesson plans for the week and the students and families know what's outlined for the week, that K through eight is very clear about what they're doing. When you get into high school, there are different expectations for different uh, types of classes. So it's um, more content driven than it is by the week. So um, as the parents told you, Tuesday is the day for all of our high schools to be following their class periods. And then they have the rest of the week to get assistance from teachers and get assistance with homework um, and all of that. So I just was really impressed with the students talking and I thought that gave a good breadth for you to see the, the different grade levels that we have. Um, one thing I wanted to report back that you asked me to report back on is how many students have not been connected to at all? And um, Spirit Lake, their elementary, there's only one family and they are doing a home visit uh, this week. Um, the SRO is going to out to help with that and they've tried all sorts of ways. I won't go into detail, but we're gonna do a home visit there. Twin Lakes Elementary has three students um, and they're also have doing uh, home visits and there's I, I don't want you to think that these are just, we're just waiting for the people to contact us. There have been several um, connections and trying, attempting to go out to the homes. So um, there is a plan for two of the three. And um, one family has actually moved out of the area so that uh, they'll be remaining in distance, but we don't have a strong connection. And then John Brown has three as well and they're doing home visits this well, this week as well. So I have a plan of action for all seven kids. Um, if you're interested in that, I'm happy to share that. Um, but I don't want to go into detail and take up too much time on the board meeting, but I want you to know that we have a plan of action for connecting with all seven um, families. The last thing I want to say is we do have a rin- re- reentry plan for the district. You saw that the governor has a reentry plan and we are uh, needing to align with the Panhandle Health Director. And we got a checklist this morning and a guidance document from the Panhandle Health District um, Director Laura Whalen. We've been in constant contact. And um, our admin team will be reviewing that tomorrow and looking at the different stages and how our comprehensive response plan fits into that and making sure that we ha- have a set plan of action moving forward and I'll keep the board informed on that. Um, last but not least, um, the graduation ceremonies. Part of that plan is we have a um, a plan in place. The both comprehensive high school principals went today to look at the site. Um, it's Kootenay County Fairgrounds and looking at a modified ceremony, um, which I will tell you about more late, later. And um, I don't want to give away too much now if that's not the stage we're on and I need to get feedback from the principals. But I want you to know that we are doing everything in our power to make sure that there is a graduation ceremony for our 2020 um, graduates. And uh, the alternative school principal, uh, Mr. Uzi and I have also um, have a plan that we have in place um, for something at that site at Mountain View that would also maintain our requirements of social distancing and all of the health uh, requirements we have in place. Um, but so we have very strong uh, but backup plans also if we aren't able to come back together with a true graduation ceremony, we will, uh, I think you'll be pleasantly surprised with everything we have. Um, and I will stand for any questions.
Well, I just want to say it's nice to hear there's something moving forward for the graduation because my heart just breaks for those kids. And so it's been rough for those seniors, I know, so. It's nice to hear there's at least a plan moving forward, so that's good. I knew you had one, but it's nice to hear it.
Well, all I can say-
Well, I'm certainly.
Oh, go ahead.
Oh, go ahead.
I was gonna say, if 200 people can stand outside of Costco six feet apart to wait to get in, 200 kids can stand six feet apart and wait in line to get a diploma.
True point, Rob. True point. Okay, any other questions for Dr. Meyer? Oh, go ahead, Ramona.
Um, I didn't necessarily have questions, but I'm really happy to hear that out of our nearly 4,600 students, we only have seven that we have not, I mean, that's awesome. Only seven, you know, that's remarkable. And I just want to say that in, in listening to the news and all the different reportings and um, how uh, the district was so prompt and so ready and so um, not, not scheduled, but prepared for their planning compared to what I've been hearing with other districts, not just in our state, but around the country. You know, I'm, I'm listening to, they're still trying to figure out how to roll out technology to kids. They're still trying to figure out, you know, if they got their uh, food, their meals and all that in place and all the, and I'm thinking, well, our district did that before they were even told to do that. Like the district, you know, that was a, a heck of a feat to get that all done and that's, that's really a, a pat on the back. You know, it really, it really is.
Thank you for acknowledging that, uh, trustee Grissom. I do want to tell you, that is from the biggest amount of teamwork you could possibly imagine. Lots of brains coming together and lots of compassion and heart and care for the community. Uh, it's just absolutely amazing, the staff in this district and everyone that pitched in. Um, we're offering, we're the only district around that's offering seven meals, seven days a week, we're doing the grab and go meals for our community. Um, and, and I just, earlier to what we talked about with the childcare, um, you just as trustees should be very proud of our district staff and everything they've done to really bound together and, and and we've got lots and lots of kudos from families that have emoted me and reached back out to me. And it's just really from everyone working together. So I'm, I'm certainly very proud of our district and I'm blessed to be able to be part of it. So thank you for acknowledging that.
Mm hmm.
Yeah, and this is just the epitome of our school district. I mean, just looking how prepared and how ready to act. Uh, it's just, it's just amazing and it, it is a testament to the teamwork and the family that is this school district. And, and I for one am proud to, to be a, a trustee on the board.
Mm hmm.
Yeah. Because there are a lot of places that have just not even caught the ball to drop it.
Right.
So I, I also, I know we're not, I don't want to take too much, but I do want to tell you while um, CFO Wallace is on here, that he has done an amazing job with helping with operations. I know he humble and doesn't really want me to point him out, but he has done an amazing job of helping me with technology, the childcare, the child nutrition, all the waivers and applications he's had to do and then um, pulling the facilities together and I've put him in charge of all the facilities and he has really um, just been extremely helpful. And he's helping to run the entire thing as well as the rest of the district leadership team, but I just wanted to give a shout out to him because uh, he obviously has never been through this before as well as none of us have in this type of thing, but he's really stepped up. And um, I just really appreciate his leadership and I wanted you just to be aware of that. Okay, if there's no more questions, um, Chairman Olston, I'll go on to the next item. Um, I just wanted the board to be aware and um, ask for your opinion. Um, it's not an action item, but just if people had thoughts um, one way or the other. I wanted you to see the letter from the Army. Right now, we have um, zero at Mountain View. There's people that are in the National Guard, but not the Army committed. We have two at Timberlake High School and three at Lakeland High School. The students have not reached out to me or the career and college counselors to ask for this, but I just wanted the board's um, blessing, I guess more than anything, just wanting to make sure the board didn't have anything uh, philosophically against this. And you can see, I know there's several other districts in the state where the students would say, I'm, I've met my graduation requirements to the best of my ability. I've met the essential standards and I'd like to join early and go uh, start serving the country if graduation wasn't going to take place. There might be less of a need for it now that we are probably gonna have, be able to have a modified graduation ceremony. But I just had put this on the agenda before that happened this morning.
Well, I, I personally think that um, on a case by case basis, since we're not talking about too awfully many kids, that um, if they meet the requirements and they are of age, um, and that was their choice to, to forego a potential uh, graduation in lieu of getting their graduation certificate so that they can join the Army, I personally would be in favor of that. Um, you know, I, again, it would be obviously a case by case if, if they meet the requirements.
So the letter says to make their transcripts available to, available to them upon their request. So I'm, I'm not sure how the letter was gonna work. Are they asking you, Dr. Meyer, to contact the kids and offer them this or wait for the kids to, I mean?
Yeah. See, how it would happen is, and again, the reason I'm asking the board is because the chairman of the board does sign off on the graduation diplomas as does the um, superintendent and the principal, ensuring, um, we have to assure that they've met the state graduation requirements and our district's requirements. So I really am just um, ensuring that if you are, if there was anybody on the board that was opposed to it, I wouldn't um, even reach back out and tell them that it was an option in our district. So that's, at this point, if it, if it is meet the board's approval, then I would let the um, Army general that put the letter, I'd just let them know that our district is in support if any students came forward.
Okay. Yep. Okay. Thank you. Yep.
Yep.
Any other question? Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, next, the online meetings. Um, so again, I just want to remind everybody, we were hoping to be able to do a live stream meeting tonight, but that wasn't possible. So um, we're hoping to move forward to a live stream so that we're a little more transparent for the next board meeting. And at that time, we're gonna want to um, reaffirm all the action items that we did from the April 14th meeting and from tonight's meeting. Just so that there's no questions, kind of like what the state board did. They went back and revisited and reaffirmed just so that there's no question that everything we're doing is um, open and transparent. So um, so if people want to discuss uh, moving to online meetings, um, I think we're probably kind of all in support of that. Uh, and then we just transitioned to a Zoom platform because it's just easier for people to link into, I think, a Zoom platform than what we're currently doing. But you know, that's, I don't know what, any other thoughts on that? But, you know, that's, I don't know what, any other thoughts on that? No?
With the re-entry plan, do we know how many more online meetings we're going to be having? It's gonna be necessary to have, I guess would be the better phrasing.
Um, a court, I don't have that figured out yet. We just got it a couple, you know, just a few hours, just today. Um, and I've read through it, but I haven't had a time to look and talk to anyone else about it yet. It more is in regards, the re-entry plan is more in regards to the schools opening, and it has to do with the amount of, um, transmission in our community, new cases, following all of the social distancing and health practices. So, um, that would be up to the board. If, uh, I know there are some boards across the state that are in large areas, they're meeting and then staying far apart from each other and having, um, in-person meetings. They're just not sitting by each other. They, there's just several things, but the, my re-entry plan is not going to be, um, dictating to the board what they will do. It's dictating, you know, it would just put out what my recommendation is based on the Panhandle Health District and the guidance from OSBE and the governor, and how we would roll out, um, schools.
Okay.
So I think we probably just want to plan for the next one to be online, but if something changes and we can come together, I think that's always a better option. It's always better when we're in person. Uh, we just have to make sure that we're clear on guidelines, because, um, then, uh, the public can attend that, and we need to make sure that we're following whatever protocols are put out there at that time. So I think we'll plan on online, and then if it changes between now and whatever that date in May is, we'll reassess. Because I would personally like to come back together, but you have to follow the rules. That date is May 12th. Any other thoughts, opinions, Dr. Meyer?
I was just letting you know, there are several districts that have already, their boards have already voted to close for the year, so they will not be coming back. Um, I, ours said if something changed, we could discuss it earlier, but tentatively, um, the time the board would vote and decide whether we were to come back would be, um, Tuesday, May 26th. And again, I'm speaking of schools that have a lot of students in one spot versus a school board with five people um, that might be able to space out if you, uh, want, if the board so desired. I just would pass along all the recommendations, and I would make sure that the board uh, talked to Laura Whalen, who's the director, because we really need to run anything that we decide to do, any plans. If the board would like to do that, uh, we would need to run by her as the director of our district.
I thought this online meeting discussion was specifically for board meetings. Because I know we've already discussed, uh, that we would, I mean, we'll keep revisiting, opening the school, but as of right now, we've-
Yeah, I was, I'm sorry, Chairman Olmstead, I wasn't very clear. What I was, uh, addressing was, uh, Trustee Thompson's question about board meetings in, in person. And if that was the case, I would still want to run, before we decided to do that as, as a district, I would just want to run the plan, if you had a plan for having in-person versus online. That's what I was actually trying to refer to.
Sorry.
No, you're good.
Okay. Any other questions? Are we, so are we all on board to do an online meeting next May 12th? Unless otherwise, something changes? Are we good with the live streaming one?
I said we give it a shot.
Okay.
I'll be in the district office.
You're already there, right? Okay, so the plan then will be for the next, uh, unless something changes, the next, uh, board meeting to be livestreamed through the Zoom platform.
Okay.
Okay? Okay. Onto, uh, the complaint of an alleged violation. So I filed this complaint in regards to emails that were sent to all of the board members discussing items on tonight's agenda. Uh, this is a violation of open meeting law, because it was addressed to everybody. Um, although I truly believe there was no intent to violate the law, the rule was straightforward on how we proceed. I had to file the complaint. We now have 14 days to have a special board meeting to discuss the violation and, uh, figure out how to make sure this doesn't happen again. I feel this is a very teachable moment, and maybe we can all come together and learn to communicate more effectively and be more open and transparent as, as a board. So that's kind of that. So Chrissy's gonna reach out to everybody, and we have to have the meeting, must be held by May 7th. So she's going to find out what dates work for everybody, and, um, based on the current circumstances, this will be, um, online. I believe this needs to be a livestreamed board meeting, just for complete transparency. And, um, so Chrissy's gonna reach out, and we're gonna set a date for that. Questions, comments? Okay. Then we're gonna move on. Um, any other discussion items? I think we're good. Okay, so I'm going to ask for a motion to enter into executive session per Idaho Code 742061B.
Um, I did have one more discussion item that wasn't on there that I did ask go on to the agenda, and it was about, um, legal counsel, if we had it locally, and if not, if we could have local legal counsel. Because I've been told conflicting things. I've been told that we have it, but then I was told we don't have it, because it was, it was an unnecessary expense for the district, because we have legal counsel through ISBA. But it's my understanding that there's a firm that's, uh, local that, uh, has a, an engagement letter with our district, um, but they're not 100% uh, concrete on where they sit in this matter, so I'm, I'm curious about that. Because I do believe we need to have local legal counsel.
So I will address that, Chairman Olmstead.
Please.
We, um, when I first started, we only had, uh, legal counsel with Julian Hole down in Boise. And, um, I asked a couple of years ago if we could have, uh, legal counsel also locally, so that if we had any issues, we could, um, actually have somebody local come over and discuss. We did retain Megan O'Dowd, uh, Lyons and O'Dowd, and we do not have to pay a retainer, but they are our legal counsel. If anything goes through ICRIMP, which is in our insurance program and a bigger picture, um, Brian can give you more information about that, we are required to go through, uh, Julian Hole down in Boise, um, because that's part of the ICRIMP process, and there's a certain amount of funding that pays for some hours, uh, through the insurance process. So to answer your question, we do have legal counsel locally, um, if we need be. And, uh, we've reached out and, uh, utilized that firm when needed. Um, I also will remind the board that we try as hard as possible to first answer the questions with our precedents, our board policy, our, uh, Idaho code. And if we need help in interpreting the law or how it applies to a situation, um, in our district, I certainly do reach out and utilize, um, the attorneys if need be.
Okay.
So any questions about, did that make sense?
No, that, that makes sense. Um, I don't know, um, uh, so we have, uh, Lyons and O'Dowd on engagement for this district, correct?
Right, and if it's not something that's covered by ICRIMP, then we would reach out and use them. But again, we really have the protocol that we try to, you know, solve the problem ourself first, and then if we need legal advice, we would certainly reach out, um, which we have done in the past. And the board would be privy to that information. But we don't have to pay a retainer, and also part of the, um, part of the arrangement also is that she, uh, Megan O'Dowd will provide, um, annual professional development and updates to education law for our K-12 admin team.
Okay.
But there is no cost to the district unless we utilize, uh, their services.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, so now I'll ask for a motion to, uh, enter into executive session per Idaho Code 742061B. Anyone? Like, can't enter without a motion.
I'll make the motion to enter into executive session per Idaho Code 742061B.
I'll second the motion.
Motion and second. It's a roll call vote.
Trustee Grissom?
Yes.
Trustee Irons?
Yes.
Trustee Thompson?
Yes.
And Chairman Olmstead?
Yes. Okay, so we'll bid adieu to Mr. Wallace. Thank you. Mr. Bradbury, thank you for joining us, and Ms. Cunningham, thank you so much. Good to see you. You guys have a good night. Okay?
Okay, I will stop the recording now.
Thank you.